Good evening, everyone. The regular meeting of the Board of Education for March 6th is called to order. Welcome to everyone present and to any television viewers. For tonight's meeting, any item on the agenda that will be voted on has been posted as required by law. This meeting is being televised live and will be replayed over the next two weeks. Please check the Board's website for replay times. The meeting is also being streamed live on our PPS TV services website. This evening, as always, we have the PPS Ombudsman Judy Martin attending the board meeting. Judy is straight in the back. Specifically, Judy will be here to listen to all the public comments and, if appropriate, provide additional support to families who want or need it. Judy can be reached at (503) 916-3045 or ombudsman@pps.net. We also have interpreters with us this evening. I like to ask them to come forward at this time, introduce themselves in the language. They will be interpreting and inform the audience where they'll be located. So please come forward. Thank you.
Me llamo Lucia Cabrejos. Soy intérprete en español. Si me necesitan, voy a estar hacia la entrada. Gracias.
Hola, señoras y señores. Si quieren comunicarse con el Vietnam, por favor, vayan a la sala del Consejo. Muchas gracias.
Hello, I'm Chinese interpreter. I speak Guangzhou dialect and also speak Cantonese. If you have any questions about this meeting, you can call me. I'll be at the back. Thank you.
Hello.
I'm Tatiana. I'm on the right side. If you need a translation in Russian, please come to the right side. And welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. So before we begin our agenda tonight, I'm going to provide an overview of the business the Board will be conducting this evening. We'll start with recognition of our classified and non-represented employees. Then we'll hear two first readings of Board policies. The Board will then consider a resolution relating to gun violence in our schools, listen to public and student comment, and receive a report from the superintendent. The Board will also this evening vote on the 2018-19 school calendar, begin our discussion on the 2018 budget, and then consider a Step 3 complaint. So with that, delighted to start the meeting this evening with a recognition of our classified and non-represented employees. And I'm going to ask two Board members, Directors Bailey and Anthony, to kick off the presentation.
Good evening. Tonight, we're recognizing our classified and non-represented employees. These are the people who keep our schools clean, the bus drivers who transport our children every day, cafeteria and nutrition service workers who keep them fed. They keep our children safe. They keep the lights on in our buildings. They keep our libraries running. They connect our children with future career possibilities. They are the secretaries who keep our schools running, and the paraeducators, and the occupational and physical therapists who care for our most vulnerable children. We are very deeply grateful for all of your contributions and all of your work.
Director Bailey?
Thanks. So I'd like to read the resolution that we will be voting on. Portland Public Schools' classified and non-represented employees are essential members of our educational team. From the moment a student steps on a school bus each weekday morning, their learning experience is shaped by members of our classified and non-represented staff. On the front lines and behind the scenes, our classified and non-represented staff are in a unique position to influence our school communities. They create a positive learning environment for our students by assisting them in the classroom, preparing and serving meals, caring for their physical needs, transporting them, keeping them safe, and aiding their families. Classified and non-represented staff keep our administrative and school offices humming, attend to our buildings and grounds, help us communicate with each other and our community, shepherd supplies and equipment, and because of this vital and integral role, we are grateful for their work and support. The Board of Education for Portland Public Schools acknowledges and applauds Portland Public Schools' assistive tech practitioners, attendance monitors, book clerks, bookkeepers, bus drivers, campus monitors, clerks, community agents, certified nursing assistants, custodians, educational assistants, whether it be for ESL programs, Head Start, or general education, food service assistants, instructional tech assistants, library assistants, licensed physical therapists, certified occupational therapy assistants, maintenance workers, nutrition service workers, orthopedic equipment technicians, occupational and physical therapists, paraeducators, secretaries, security techs, sign language interpreters, transportation route schedulers, that's almost A to Z, analysts, associates, coordinators, functional leads, developers, advocates, evaluators, photojournalists, supervisors, technicians, and specialists, and senior specialists, and more, too numerous to name. For your efforts on behalf of the more than 49,000 students of Portland Public Schools of our community, the classified and non-represented employees deserve our collective recognition and thanks, and I'll add our respect. Thank you. So be it resolved that the Board of Education declares March 5th through 9th, 2018, Classified and Non-Represented Employee Appreciation Week in recognition of the many daily services provided to enrich and support students in Portland Public Schools toward their highest achievement possible. Be it further resolved that the Board encourages the Portland Public Schools' community to join in honoring classified and non-represented employees for their impact on our students and our community. Thank you. So moved.
We're going to vote on it in a minute, but I'm going to ask Superintendent Guerrero.
Yes, I'd like to invite our Chief of Human Resources, or as Louie liked to say, Talent and Culture, Kylie Rogers, up to share a comment on our behalf.
Thank you very much, Superintendent and School Board. Good evening, everyone. I am thrilled to be here tonight to introduce the PPS. I'm thrilled to be here tonight to introduce the PPS classified and non-represented honorees who were selected by their peers to be honored here tonight during the 2018 Classified and Non-Represented Appreciation Week. We received over 300 nominations this year. Selection of the 16 honorees that we will honor tonight involved our union partners and was very difficult, given the many outstanding and deserving PPS employees nominated. Each honoree will be receiving a paperweight inscribed with the PPS logo and the words "outstanding achievement." Each honoree will also receive copies of the nominations submitted on their behalf and a copy of tonight's Appreciation Week resolution. I would like to individually call up each honoree attending tonight to receive a gift from the superintendent and the school board. Honorees, please be sure to pause a moment at the end for a photo. Mathandra Fenner, Paraeducator at Chapman. So we can all four stand in front of the podium. And even on either side of the podium, I thought it was better to see. So one, two, three, four, one, two, three. Super. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Craig Gents, Custodian here at BESC. Talisa Green, Student Success Advocate, Alliance High School at Meek. Cecilia Hornbuckle, Vice Principal's Secretary at Roosevelt. Kathy Huck, Educational Assistant at Vernon. Irma Johnson, Library Assistant at Benson. Super. Thank you. Madeline Kokas, High School Career Coordinator at Grant. Truk Lee, Educational Assistant at Roseway Heights. Thank you. Leora Mahoney, Bus Driver, Student Transportation. Well, let's get friendly here. Amy Ruona, Student Success Advocate at Wright. Melissa Watson, Asset Management Technician here at the BESC. And this next one not only being honored tonight, but celebrating a birthday today. Carissa Yazolino White, Campus Security Agent at Lane. Several honorees were unable to attend this evening, so I would like to announce their names. Tony Gay, Electrician here at BESC. Jennifer George, Nutrition Services Lead at Dunaway. Tang Nguyen, Custodian at Roseway Heights. And Tammy Tusher, Transport Route Schedular in Student Transportation. Now, I would like to ask the audience to join me once more in thanking our honorees for the incredible work they do each day for the children and families of the Portland Public Schools' community.
Thank you once again to all our valued employees for your recognition and for your service to our students. Thank you for being here this evening.
So there's one last piece of business. We haven't yet voted on the resolution. So can I have a motion?
So moved.
The resolution has been moved by Director Bailey. It's been seconded by Director Sparza Brown. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Student Rep Tran?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero with Student Rep Tran voting yes. Congratulations. So next, we have a couple of first readings of our policies. We have, I'm going to ask Director Constam, who these resolutions came out of her, I'm sorry, not resolutions, these policies came out of her committee. So Director Constam, you want to share with us the policies?
I do. Thank you very much. So we have two first readings tonight. One is for a new policy, a teen dating policy, which is actually mandated by state law. Another is a revision to our own nondiscrimination anti-harassment policy. This has been a long time coming, these revisions to our anti-harassment policy, and we're going to ask Mary Kane from our Legal Counsel's Office to come up and talk a little bit about the substance of the revisions and of the new policy. But I wanted to set a little bit of context, which is the initiative of the school board to take a fresh look at this policy. It's really been over a year now that we wanted to go back into the anti-harassment policy and make some revisions. It was precipitated partly by the settlement of the Whitehurst case and the concerns that came out of that, and also by some, really, I want to call out the courageous leadership of one of our students who is now in college, Annabelle Schwartz, who as a senior at Cleveland was a real champion for pushing the district to make necessary revisions to the anti-harassment nondiscrimination policy. And the other piece I want to mention, which Mary will probably address too, is that these policy changes that the Board will eventually adopt are being put forward in concert with some really significant work on the parallel administrative procedures that accompany them. And that's really where the rubber meets the road, as they say. That's where we provide the guidance to all of our employees on the ground for how to implement new policies and policy revisions and make sure that they have the training to not only comply, but to really be supportive, supported in their judgments in dealing with these situations. So Mary, thank you very much for your work on both of these, and thanks for providing a little bit more detail.
I don't know if there's a lot that I need to add, but these are related policies in that they are both intended to create a safer environment for our students. And the teen dating violence and domestic violence policy is, as you've mentioned, it's a state mandated that we develop this policy. It will address both, sort of, help us through the ADs to develop an enforcement policy, a complaint policy, as well as, there's an educational piece that is required. And so those two will be flowing from the, I'm hoping the administrative directives will address that. Similarly, we expanded upon the nondiscrimination policy. We have kind of more clearly defined what discrimination we are prohibiting. And we've also, in the new, in the proposed policy, offered information about complaints to where they could be addressed, as well as the Title IX Coordinator position and what work that coordinator will be handling. As Board Member Constam mentioned, a lot of the work is going to be in the administrative directives that flow from this. The intention was to create a very broad umbrella in this policy and then do a lot of very detailed work on anti-harassment investigations, again, investigations for harassment claims, as well as for those sexual harassment, teen dating, violence, sexual claims through the Title IX Coordinator position. We've done, we've started the work on that already, and hopefully with this passage, we will, we will complete that work shortly.
I also wanted to add that even prior to this consideration of this first reading and the Board's eventual adoption, the district has already provided stronger guidance to our, through our principal leadership, to really help instructors and administrators with handling these types of concerns.
We've started the trainings, the Title IX trainings at the administrative level, and the intention is to continue that and offer that to a broader range. And that will be, we'll be able to do that more in depth once we have those ADs completed.
So just a clarification, that teen dating violence, domestic violence, that is a new, a brand-new policy.
It's a brand-new policy.
And the other one is a set of revisions. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yes.
And I hope you have in your packet the original, I included the original.
Nondiscriminate, anti-discrimination.
Right. Policy.
And then, just, maybe there's a question for the superintendent. In here, the policy, so we, there's a public comment period of 21 days, and the new policy has that any, all complaints regarding sexual harassment and sexual violence should go to the Title IX Coordinator. Do we anticipate that about the time when we're done, that we'll have?
We, we have a, we have a Title IX Coordinator currently. She's in interim at this time, and we've begun the process to hire a full-time coordinator.
Fourth paragraph says complaints regarding discrimination and anti-harassment. Is that sort of a title?
Which policy?
Oh, the nondiscrimination.
Shouldn't it be harassment instead of anti-harassment?
Yes. Thank you.
I would call that a cosmetic change, so.
Thank you.
The first policy revision. Any other questions or comments we, or during this first reading process? So we'll have lots, we'll have lots of time to work them through. Any other just high-level comments or questions for either Mary Kane or Director Constam?
I don't think so.
Great. So these policies after tonight, after they've had their formal first reading tonight, they'll be posted up on the webpage under the Board Policies section under drafts. So people will have 21 days to comment on them, the last day to comment being March 27th, 2018. The contact information for public comment is also posted with the policy, so if people are interested in commenting, all the information should be there online. And then, let's see, actually, I think I had the, that's not my date. And then I also want to tonight, so, thank you, we're done with the first two readings of those policies, and thanks to the committee for their hard work. So I also want to flag, as long as we're in first readings, that last week we had four, four new draft policies. The naming school district property policy, the public access to district records, the cash management policy, the diploma requirements for veterans policy. Those are already posted, and they're in their 21-day comment period. So we have six policies that are up for comment. And the last day to comment on those four policies is March 20th. So thanks to all the committees for, I think that represents several committees' work. So thank you for everybody for getting those out, and we look forward to getting any feedback from parents, community, employees. So next off, we have a resolution on gun violence in our schools. And I want to recognize two before Director Constam opens up. I wanted to. And I want to recognize two, before Director Konstam opens up, I wanted to just recognize two board members who've worked on this. Director Konstam, sort of the catalyst for the Council for Great City Schools to put together a draft resolution on the topic. And I want to thank Director Moore for really customizing tonight's resolution to an Oregon context. So, thank you both for playing different roles in this. Director Konstam?
Thank you. I'm really pleased to see this be for us tonight. So, Portland Public Schools is a part of the Council of Great City Schools, which has 68 member districts across the country, including Broward County in Florida, which had our most recent school shooting episode. Collectively, the school districts serve more than 7 million students. And so, as we were in this moment that we, you know, happens again and again, that we all can't believe of having to mourn another set of students, it seemed to me that this organization should be front and center in the conversation around school safety. And so, I reached out to the Council of Great City Schools to say, what are we going to do collectively as school districts to really stand up and say, never again? And the council has crafted a new legislative agenda that they're going to unveil at their Legislative and Policy Conference in Washington later this month, that some of us, staff and board, will be attending, which is a pretty aggressive agenda. And this is a powerful lobbying organization and a well-respected voice in Washington that is listened to on the Hill, as I said, representing more than 7 million schoolchildren. So, the follow-on to that conversation was, hey, we should have a resolution that each, hopefully every member district can adopt to, so that when we speak, we say, this is coming forward on behalf of all these member districts, representing all these students' families and educators. So, I won't go through the whole resolution. It has been posted, but it has, it is very strong. I'll go through each of the salient points. First and foremost, that we stand with the students of Broward County Public Schools and the nation in demanding effective and comprehensive action from the federal government to protect schoolchildren. Calls on the Congress to ban the manufacture, sale, purchase, possession, and use of all semi-automatic weapons and large-capacity ammunition cartridges, except those needed by the military and law enforcement. Calls for strengthening universal background checks. Calls for federal agencies to form a task force to reduce the number of gun-related injuries and deaths. Stands against the arming of educators, which, as you know, is an active conversation. So, it's pretty significant that this, this broad-based organization is drawing a line in the sand there. And then goes on with several other measures, calling for federal investment in school security systems, in school counselors, and all of that. So, I want to thank Director Moore for adopting this for Portland Public Schools. And, you know, Rita commented earlier that this is a, this is not a watered-down statement from this very powerful organization. This is a, we have had enough, and we will not stand by. So, it'll be very interesting to take this message to the Hill on behalf of all of these people who serve children every day. So, I'm really proud that we are a part of it and we can lend our voice to this national movement.
Thank you, Director Konstam. Director Moore?
Yeah, I just wanted to say a couple of things. When I, we, we all got a copy of the resolution, the proposed resolution, from the council. And I have to say, I was a little stunned when I read it. I don't think I've ever seen anything coming out of a national organization that advocates for this level of gun control. I, I am beginning to think that we might actually get something this time, for the very first time. This has been brewing for decades, and it feels to me like we're finally maybe turning a corner. And I'm, I'm very glad that the PPS Board is going to be weighing in. And I think this is something, I would encourage all school boards in the state of Oregon to take this up as well. And I just want to point out that since the school shooting in Columbine in 1999, which is generally seen as sort of the beginning of the era of school shootings, there have been school shootings in Oregon at Thurston High School in Springfield, Springwater Trail High School in Gresham, Reynolds High School in Troutdale, and Umpqua Community College in Roseburg. In addition to the hundreds of other episodes that have occurred across the country, roughly one Oregonian per day dies because of, due to gun usage, from suicide or murder or accidents. This is a public health issue. And it is, it's something that our students are worried about every day. And it is the responsibility of the adults to take care of them. So, I'm thrilled that we're passing this, and I'm amazed that the Council of Great City Schools has taken this on. So, I'm, for the very first time, a little hopeful.
Board members want to speak to the resolution?
I think another part that I forgot to mention is just really lending some support to the student leadership on this issue nationally, locally.
Well, I think it shows a great, a great stance for PPS that we want to make sure that our schools are safe for our students and that, instead of putting guards up in our schools, that we're putting guards out there in the world and not in stores and places of purchases, instead of going the other way and arming our schools or metal detectors, shows a real, I think, shows support for students and putting students first. That matters that students feel safe and that we don't want to turn this around and make sure everyone else feels safe in our schools.
Yeah. And that includes our staff as well. Somebody with three PPS teachers in the family, it's something that's always there in my mind.
Miss Houston, is there any comment, public comment on this resolution? Can I have a motion on Resolution 5606?
So moved.
Second?
It's been moved by Director Anthony and seconded by Director Konstam. A motion to adopt Resolution 5606. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Student Representative Tran? The motion passes on a seven to zero vote with student rep Tran voting aye. Let's see.
And just a thank you for all of our counselors and everybody who works with our kids to support them and our security folks as well.
Absolutely. Thank you. Also, we'll ask that the district staff forward on this resolution to state officials. And I think you can take it yourself when you go to DC, so we can effectively deliver our message. Superintendent Guerrero, we have probably time for your report before the time's certain?
Well, good evening, everybody. Congratulations again to our classified and non-represented employees. Congratulations and thank you for your service. Well, I want to continue to speak today, this evening, about how we, as a school district, are addressing our response to the unfortunate tragedy that took place this past February 14th at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School in Florida. I appreciate our board's courage in adopting this pretty assertive resolution this evening. March 14th is a date that has been identified for schools across the country to pause and reflect on the terrible incident that took place and to promote a dialogue around school safety. Please know that we have sent guidelines to all of our school principals and encourage all of our educators to lead appropriate activities during this very teachable moment. PPS is supporting activities that promote safe and supportive schools. We are working to provide instructional resources to our teachers. We are developing a webpage that will list resources, suggested lessons, and other useful information. You can find that posted tomorrow at pps.net-backsplashmoment. I also want to publicly thank PAT President Suzanne Cohen for communicating a similar message to teachers across the district as well. We are working with principals so that we are aware of all planned activities scheduled to take place on this date, March 14th. Families may also have seen a related message that was sent earlier today as well. On this date and every other day, frankly, student safety is our first priority and concern. Please know that we are monitoring planned activity as we learn of it. We are working with our principals, school safety teams, our district security team, and continue to plan. This morning was another example of that, of our collaboration and partnership on preparing for days like these with the Portland Police Bureau as well. Middle school update, I just wanted to put a shout-out out there for the Harriet Tubman Middle School community. They had a tour this past Wednesday evening. It drew over 400 people, which was a much bigger-than-expected turnout. Shows that there's a very strong community interest and excitement in opening that school and moving forward. So, glad to hear that that was an exciting evening for our Harriet Tubman community. I wanted to give a little commercial plug to an upcoming Portland Workforce Alliance activity on March 13th. This is an annual breakfast and job fair for our youth. It's my first one I'll be attending, but I understand it's quite a production. It's one of the ways that our students get to meet with the business community and encourage them to start thinking more deeply about their future role in the workforce. Part of that event is dedicated or devoted to a job fair. So, thousands of our students will be bussed into the convention center, and will get a chance to meet with a wide range of business and industry representatives. High school musical season will be, well, we've been talking about having an arts-focused upcoming board meeting, but I wanted to take the opportunity to share just a sample of some rich arts activities that are happening now, because I don't, if I don't mention them, you might miss the shows. And I don't want you to miss some of the following student productions, given it is season for high school musicals. Cleveland is rehearsing Legally Blonde. Franklin will stage Anything Goes. Grant and Lincoln are each performing Into the Woods on March 8th. Jefferson is staging a school play for the first time, actually, in several years called Twelve Angry Men. Madison is having, just wrapping up a staging of High School Musical and is getting ready for a May production of a student-directed one-act play and films. Roosevelt has The Miracle Worker, and Wilson is putting on a series of short, student-written plays under the umbrella title of, "Shut Up, You Can't Tell Me What To Do, You're Not My Real Dad," quote-unquote. So, for more information, I just want to encourage everyone to visit the school website or see today's edition of The Pulse and hope to see many of you at these student performances. Congrats to our student performers. And then, I wanted to end finally this evening. We're celebrating a lot of our high school basketball teams, and many of them are heading to statewide finals this week. We'll be cheering them on. Want to wish good luck to Benson, Grant, Lincoln, and Jefferson. But I actually want to share with you this evening a short video. It's about another group of student athletes and the power of sports for all of our students, including diverse learners. Unified sports brings students with intellectual disabilities together with general education students for good-spirited competition. So, I hope that you enjoy this video of the unified basketball program at Grant High School.
We're having a game with Wilson. It's really big, and I really hope my team can get the win.
It is an opportunity for students who have special education needs to join their general education peers in a basketball competition. The message is that all students, regardless of ability and differently abledness, should have the opportunity to play, to play sports and to be part of the team.
It makes me feel better. It just makes me want to make more baskets.
It's amazing to see the kids and have our, the general education students, the special education students, all coming together and cheering each other on. And the roles are kind of reversed. So, this is a highlight of a sporting event that normally, you know, you wouldn't see students necessarily participating, but this is their game.
It's a lot of fun for me and for the players. They have a lot of fun out here.
We have students that are helping to coach, who also work with the teams at practice.
Every time I play the basketball, it always makes me feel good.
I just love everything about it.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Superintendent Guerrero. Nice way to wrap up your report. Before we begin the public comment tonight, I'd like to review our guidelines. The board, thanks for, the community for taking the time to attend the meeting and provide your perspective and insights to the board. We value public input because it informs our work. Our responsibility as a board is to actively listen with our electronic devices turned off. A quick reminder that board members and the superintendent will not respond to comments or questions during public comment, but our board office will follow up on board-related issues raised during public testimony, if appropriate. Guidelines for public input emphasize respect and consideration for others. Complaints about individual employees should be directed to the superintendent's office as a personnel matter. Presenters will have a total of three minutes to share your comments. Begin by stating your name and spelling your last name for the record. During the first two minutes of testimony, a green light will appear. When you have one minute remaining, a yellow light will go on, and when your time is up, the red light will go on and a buzzer will sound. We respectfully ask at that time that you conclude your comments. So, with that, Ms. Houston, will you call the first two individuals up tonight?
We have Lisa Zuniga and Susan Carson.
Thank you, Board of Directors. I'm addressing this, though, most specifically to you, Superintendent Guerrero. I think the majority of the board here has heard my fix-it-on-the-front-end testimony at least three times already, in three years in a row. What I'm about to tell you may come as a shock. I know it came as a shock to me and my husband when we took in two foster children, PPS students, grades two and six, back in spring of 2015. Like most children in the foster care system, they'd missed a great deal of school. Like many PPS students, foster or not, they were academically behind. And so, with the school year drawing to a close, I started asking about summer school opportunities. It never once occurred to me that such supports were all but nonexistent in PPS. I learned that Title I schools had summer programs, but only for students enrolled in those schools. I found a handful of son's schools that, recognizing the high needs of their students, had coordinated academic summer programs, but again, limited to their students and with little to no support from the district. I met Tim Schultz, who was on his way here, I don't think he made it, a teacher at Harrison Park, who in direct response to an urgent need, had created PDx Summer School, but felt unsupported by the district and eventually gave up, even though a PSU study showed that students enrolled in his five-week program made market gains. PPS did offer a two-week summer program for ESL students, which my boys were invited to attend after my persistent inquiries. To say the least, they were utterly confused by that experience. I've had children in PPS for 17 years. I've had children in PPS for 17 years and I'm well aware of budget constraints, but I firmly believe that offering year-round supports for all struggling students should be a priority. Hence my mantra, fix it on the front end. Sadly, my children are aging out of the front end of their public school education, but I'm here on behalf of all parents and educators who experience anxiety as June approaches knowing that academic gains will slow, stop, or shift. Students are succumbing to summer slide instead of building on momentum. What a huge waste. I urge you to look at PPS summer supports or lack thereof and think about how much greater the gains could be if the offerings were consistent and served all students. Resources are being underutilized simply for lack of coordination and absence of an overarching strategy. Please design a budget and a plan that speaks to PPS's compelling goal, every student by name will meet or exceed academic standards. If you don't have the bandwidth, then partner with groups like Saturday Academy and University of Portland, which last summer jointly offered a five-week tutoring program that focused on reading and math, rounded out by STEAM classes that my children found absolutely compelling. I touched base with them this morning and learned that they need facilities for starters. Regardless of how we get there, I'm on the last sentence, it's time for PPS to actually offer year-round supports. We've waited for three long years. Please take this step toward bridging the divide between students who walk across the stage diploma in hand and those who fall by the wayside. Thank you.
Thank you.[693.81][693.81](Applause).
Good evening. Thank you for listening tonight. My name is Andy Lohr, last name spelled L-O-H-R. I'm here tonight to express my extreme disappointment with the decision by Portland Public Schools to let the pre-kindergarten program run by Irvington Extended Day and located in Beaumont Middle School to shut down. Miramampur's program is one of the chief reasons our daughter, Zandi, now eight, arrived at Alameda Elementary so ready for kindergarten. I know that several of her friends there moved on to Saban and other schools just as ready as she was, and we looked forward to sending our son Ruben, four, following in her footsteps next year. It is an indispensable part of the Northeast Portland community, more affordable than private preschools, convenient for families with siblings in neighboring elementary and middle schools, and in line with your district-wide goal of enhancing early childhood education in an equitable manner. When I first heard the pre-K was losing its space at Beaumont, my first response was, I guess they really need the space. After learning more, my sad conclusion is that this is happening because of indecision and lack of leadership. To the people who have been involved with the decision and communicated it to us, Ms. King, the Director of Planning and Asset Management, and Ms. Cowden, Real Estate Program Manager, if you're in charge of planning and asset management and real estate programs respectively, then plan your assets and manage your real estate so that good programs don't have to close down for no good reason.[803.00][803.00](Crowd) If the district is not ready to make decisions about how to allocate space for next year, I want to know why were the Beaumont art teacher and principal allowed to make an executive decision about their space after enrollment in the pre-K had already begun no less? Ms. Rayco Williams, the principal at Saban, has indicated that she would happily give the pre-K a home and the pre-K would be happy to move to Saban. As far as I can tell, there is no legitimate reason why Saban would not be a good home for this program. Instead, the program is going to close its doors because you're, and I am admittedly paraphrasing, not sure what's happening next year. You will have to forgive me for the venom in my tone, but after holding our breath through last fall's proposed boundary changes, this is the second time PPS has pulled, or at least threatened to pull, the rug out from under our family. Rest assured, we will remember these missteps the next time redistricting comes up and the next time we vote for our representatives on the school board. I'm asking one more time for you to proactively help find a home for a great program next year. Mr. Amampur, the pre-K staff who stands to lose their jobs, I assume, our son and his 30-odd prospective classmates all deserve better. Thank you very much for your time.[874.66][874.66](Applause).
Thank you.[876.66][876.66](Applause).
Hi, good evening. I'm John Brady, B-R-A-D-Y. I'm the co-president of the Saban Elementary PTA, although I'm not speaking on behalf of the PTA tonight. Instead, I'm speaking on behalf of my two boys, Theo and Tristan, proud alums of the Beaumont-Alameda Pre-K program, and also the hundreds of alumni parents who have enjoyed this program. Beaumont-Alameda Pre-K is an educational treasure, and instead of fostering it, the district seems intent on undermining it. For three decades, the school has educated pre-K students. It's beloved in the community and can boast hundreds of supportive alumni families. For the last eight years, they have occupied a room in Beaumont Middle School, and the district promised the pre-K use of this space for next year. Then, without warning, last month, the district reneged on its promise. This has left close to two dozen families scrambling after enrollment has ended at other pre-K schools. You have to understand how difficult that is. It has dealt a serious blow to a successful pre-K program. This is a pre-K program with dedicated teachers. It prepares its students exceedingly well. It's one of the most affordable programs in the city and offers generous financial aid. This is a program entirely in line with what the Superintendent has said he wants to remote value and expand, and without explanation, the district has denied it the space it needs. In the end, for me, this is about being true to our words. We teach our kids to keep their promises, so I don't think it's too much to ask the adults responsible for teaching our kids to do the same. Keep your promise to Beaumont-Alameda Pre-K and do it soon, please. The longer the pre-K has to wait, the harder it will be to recover. Keep your promise, provide Beaumont-Alameda Pre-K with the classroom you said it could have so that it can do what it does best, teaching kids. Thank you very much.[997.13][997.13](Applause).
Thank you both for your comments.
Lastly, we have Ben Hoffman and Steve Novick.
Good evening, Chair Brim Edwards and members of the Board. My name is Dr. Ben Hoffman, H-O-F-F-M-A-N. I'm a practicing pediatrician at Dornbecker Children's Hospital here in Portland, and I'm here representing both OHSU and the Oregon Pediatric Society. And I'm here tonight to express my strongest support for initiatives that would delay school start times for adolescents in the Portland Public Schools. Simply put, we're failing our kids, perpetuating programs and policies that fly in the face of existing science around sleep and the biologic imperatives of adolescence. While the science of sleep is indeed complex, the facts about adolescent sleep are pretty easy to understand. While teens may look like young adults, their biology is fundamentally different. It's a well-established fact that teens need between eight and a half and nine hours of sleep per night to function at the peak of their abilities. And during pupil changes in the sleep-wake cycle, we find that most adolescents get their best, most restful sleep between 11:00 PM and 8:00 AM. At present, in the United States, approximately half of the public high schools still commence classes before 8:00 AM, and Portland Public Schools are right on the margin of that. In most cases, school start times are based on anachronistic needs for agricultural workers and outmoded transportation programs. And while I understand that the implications of affecting change in high school start times include many broader implications for elementary and middle school students in the district, I don't pretend that these changes will be easy to mitigate. I do feel like they are important. There are a number of trusted and empiric medical and health organizations who strongly support this initiative, including the American Academy of Pediatrics through a policy statement, the American Medical Association, the U.S. Centers for Disease Control, who all recommend that high school start, middle and high school classes start no earlier than 8:30. There's a lot of data behind this. A large multi-state analysis from the University of Minnesota and the Centers for Disease Control concluded that delayed high school start times resulted in significantly fewer car crashes, decreased tardiness and absenteeism, as well as higher scores on national standardized tests. I would suggest that later is better when it comes to this issue. 8:30 recommendations based on the fact that teenagers need eight and a half, nine hours of sleep and don't get tired until 11:00. I would think that 9:00 is the right time. In reviewing the literature that exists and the facts that are known, there's little doubt that teens would benefit from later start times. You can try and fight biology, but you assuredly will not win, and more specifically, our kids will lose. As a pediatrician, my career's been guided by one simple principle, and that's to do what's best for kids. I urge you to employ that principle and address the biologic needs of teens to allow them to thrive, to make us all proud, and to become the leaders that will take our fair city forward.
Thank you.[1189.53][1189.53](Applause).
Chair Brim Edwards, members of the Board, Superintendent Guerrero, my name is Steve Novick, N-O-V-I-C-K, and I want to second the doctor's recommendation for later high school start times. I would suggest at a minimum 9:00. If students don't get tired until 11:00, they probably don't get to sleep until 11:30, and if they need at least eight and a half hours of sleep, that puts you to eight, you're not going to be able to get up, get dressed, and get to school in half an hour. Seattle has gone to between either 8:45 or 8:55 for all of their schools. I think that we should beat Seattle and go to at least 9:00.[1226.22][1226.22](Laughter). The Rand Corporation says it's estimated that if you give teenagers an extra hour of sleep, you can expect to see high school graduation rates improve by 13%, and you can expect to see college attendance improve by 9%. An economist in California named Teddy Shapiro has estimated that giving teenagers an extra hour of sleep is equivalent to trading a teacher of, quote, "average effectiveness," and I know that's a hot potato, do I talk about average, to a teacher of 84th percentile effectiveness. Finally, I'm here to tell you that doing this would not be political suicide. I actually polled on this issue in my city council race. We had a question that said, "Novick supports later high school start times because," and we said what the research was, and we asked people if they thought that was a convincing argument to vote for Novick. 65% thought that it was, 30% thought that it wasn't. Perhaps more importantly, only 16% thought that it was not at all convincing, which means that at most, 16% of people are really against this idea, and I'm sure some of those 16% just thought no reason to vote for Novick was a good reason. So I think it's actually less than 16%. At this point, I'd like to yield my remaining time, I know this is technically against the rules, but Faisal Osman from the Multnomah Youth Commission is here with a couple of colleagues, and it would be great if the Youth Commission could be heard briefly.
Mr. Novick, we have, we don't allow people who haven't signed up because a lot of other people have asked to sign up.
Okay.
What I would ask, yeah, what I would ask is any testimony be provided, and we'll share it with the rest of the...
Written testimony?
Yes.
Okay. Then in closing, I would just like to say...
And I just want to apologize by saying that a lot of other people called in to ask to comment and weren't allowed to, so...
All right. Well, then I'll just close by saying, in the immortal words of the Greek goddess of victory, "Just do it."[1345.83][1345.83](Laughter).
You had me at the competition with Seattle.[1351.01][1351.01](Laughter).[1352.01][1352.01](Applause). Ms. Houston, anyone else? Is that, that's it?
That's it.
I have one clarifying question.
Okay. Student Representative Tran.
Yeah, so on public comment, I know we have adult section for public comment, do we still have a student section for public comment, or have we...
So it's all together?
It's all together now.
And students, yeah, but students have preference.
Right. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Anything else? Okay. So next, speaking of the calendar, this is more days and dates versus times. We have an agenda item that's of interest to families, staff alike. It's the school calendar. I'm going to ask Director Sparza Brown, who's the Chair of the Teaching and Learning Committee, to introduce this item.
Okay. So the Teaching and Learning Committee met this week and we reviewed the calendar that was, the edited calendar that was proposed by the Superintendent, which starts school in late August and gives a Family Week in November, and eliminates late starts and early releases for the most part for elementary and middle school. And we, yeah, (laugh), and we've gotten really good feedback from the community on the calendar as well. So the Teaching and Learning Committee is forwarding the proposed calendar for the Board votes.
Superintendent Guerrero, would you like to add anything?
Sure. We let the Board know we had a recommendation ready, and it was referred to Teaching and Learning. Thank you for giving it some time. Our original recommendation was really unchanged as regards to the student calendar, but what we did add in partnership with PAT is we wanted to make sure and include on the school, on the student-school district calendar also the specifically designated days for staff PDE, teacher training, the days up front in August. So we wanted to clarify those details. You have that most accurate version now, and that's been here for your consideration.
And I think what was impressive also is that staff shared with us the many stakeholders that were, whose input was considered in really creating this new calendar, so we forwarded it for a vote here.
It also got us two more full school days, right? Excellent point. Director Constam, so I just want to say, I want to thank the Superintendent and staff for bringing forward this calendar. I think it is one of the most student-focused calendars we've had in, I think, my two decades with PPS. A couple of years ago, we had some parents who started participating in the Calendar Committee and pushing for many of the things that are contained in this calendar, including an earlier start, which allows kids to get more instructional time before important AP and IB tests. So thank you for bringing forward a calendar that I think really maximizes and optimizes our instructional time for our students. Does anybody else have anything they want to say about the school calendar? Okay, Ade.
One thing I want to comment on too is there's two days of professional development for teachers in August when they reach their own school, and I think that's really important in terms of creating really successful environments in schools for our kids. So I'm really appreciative of that extra day of PDE in August.
Student-friendly and staff-friendly.
It is. It's good.
It is very student-friendly. I think I get that.
I think this is how we got it out of committee. I think the Superintendent asked our student rep what he thought about it, and what was your response?
I said, I said, "This is a great calendar."[1618.72][1618.72](Laughter).
And we agreed.
Yes.
Director Moore?
And next year, we talk about day start times for high schools. Just saying.
One step at a time, Director Moore.
I will, I'll pile on to that in saying that it's best practice to adopt a calendar more than just a year in advance, so once we get this in the bag, let's start thinking a little bit ahead.
I think somebody might want to say something?[1656.33][1656.33](Laughter).
Chief Human Resources Officer, I just wanted to add for the Superintendent and Directors and the public's benefit that as development days, professional development days for our other labor partners are finalized, that they would be added to the calendar as well. So as our classified connections were, the dates were finalized in partnership with them, we would see that on the calendar on the website as well.
Thank you.
We recognize our families. We're very anxious to see the calendar. We're working feverishly to plug in the other staff development days, so that's what you're seeing, sort of as additional detail.
I think it's important to note too that I think this calendar reflects wise planning. In past years, we haven't always planned in advance for snow days, and I think we've got an excellent plan this next year, regardless of whether it's a year like last year or a year like this year. So I think that should give our families something that they can really count on. Anything else?
Just want to acknowledge, you know, nobody, we'll never have a calendar that everybody is happy with, and we certainly received letters pushing back against some aspects of that. We do read all those letters, and here we are. We're never going to get consensus on this, but we did have a lot of stakeholders weigh in on the front end of it.
Great. Can I have a motion?
So move.
It's been moved by Director Anthony and seconded by Director Sparza Brown. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Any noes? Student Representative Tran?
Yes.
The motion passes on a seven-to-zero vote with Student Representative Tran voting yes. Thank you to the Teaching and Learning Committee and all the PPS staff who worked on that.
Especially Rudy. Thank you very much.
Yes. Thank you, Rudy.[1775.22][1775.22](Applause).
I don't think we would have been able to leave tonight if we hadn't, Rudy wouldn't have let us leave tonight without adopting this. She was, gotta get that calendar out. Okay, so our next agenda item, you know, this is somewhat of a forward-looking board meeting because in addition to the calendar for next year, we're also going to have our first board meeting discussion. first board meeting discussion on the 2018-19 budget. We already had a work session and for, on the budget, sort of some principles, and so we thought we'd ask the superintendent tonight to sort of walk through the timeline, the guiding principles, school staffing, and anything else, how you want to frame the start of the budget.
Great, and I'm glad we're going to have continued space to get into the details in FAO and our budget committee meeting, but we want to make sure and provide at least some high-level updates as often as we can, as the budget continues to develop. So we have here this evening our interim budget and finance team, the distinguished Jim Schersinger, and returning back for more, Ryan Ducher, as well as Deputy Curtis and Assistant Sue Lopez, in case we need them for backup, they're here as well.
Great, so if the general AV room can put our, oh, that's already on the screen. So you have the budget timeline in front of you, so the way we'd start, we'd walk through this, we'll kind of give you some expectations for the next four or five months. This is relatively high level, as you can imagine, we have a lot of detail beneath this for our respective HR teams, our instructional teams, and our finance teams. But I'll kind of give you an idea of what to expect and when you'll be seeing information. Also, some key dates in here, where we're going to be preparing information for the public, for FAO, and then for our CBRC meetings as well. So we'll go through that piece. We're also going to talk, we'll give you some insight into the analysis we've done so far, to kind of give you some ideas on how we're thinking about revenue and expenses. And then, a pretty significant portion of this presentation will be given by Dr. Curtis and Antonio Lopez on the staffing piece, because that's the piece that we really have probably the most definition around right now, is that kind of helps us understand a few key pieces. So, as you can see, you know, kind of the key pieces of work, probably best to look at this from left to right. Obviously, a lot of work goes into the budget. We're really working hard to make sure that this work helps provide focus for the district and good clarity, as we, as teams are reorganizing their work and that type of thing. So our central office and our school staff spend a fair amount of time on the budget work. The next row down, you'll see all the work sessions for the board. And what we have envisioned here, just like this meeting, is we'll be giving regular updates on the budget. So rather than giving you one 250-page book at one time that you have to flip through, we're going to give you bite-sized pieces along the way, as we know more, to kind of help, it's a lot, so help you digest, you know, the 600 and some million dollars that are in our general fund budget. You can see some key dates here, when you get out into April, when the superintendent will propose the budget at the end of April. You'll see right now, we have approval as of the end of May. We have a proposal out to TSCC, which they've responded favorably to, to push that approval date into the early part of June. There's definitely, TSCC is evaluating multiple municipalities at that point, so they have a little bit of a project management they have to do. They've asked for, they've asked us for some things in exchange in terms of clarity and how we package the data, but I believe we'll be able to work with that. It'll be, there's statute around this, and this is an exception to the statute, so we'll have to ask for, formally ask for an exception to give them that data late.
So the statutory date is May 15th.
Right.
So we really pushed it back, and so I made a lot of promises about how we would involve them in the process and get them data, so that they can get their work done, and assured them this is a one-time thing, and when the next year rolls around, we'll be more, we'll be earlier in the process.
Just to clarify, the reason for, for the reason why we asked for, to push back the approval date, is we're actually getting the budget later, and if we're able to push back the approval date later, it gives, it gives the community and the board an opportunity to spend more time with the complete package. So it's just a variety of factors this year, that'll give us more time, so.
I think we have...
It'll just be a one-year deal.
We definitely have good arguments, I'm just reflecting what he said, you know, in a way that tried to make his point for them. So he knows we're representing him here.
That's right, yes, yeah, there is, there's a reason why we want to push that later. So the last piece, obviously, we have to have the budget, by law, we have to have the budget adopted before the next fiscal year starts, so this is towards the end of June, so it doesn't give us a lot of buffer, but, you know, I think this timeline gives us plenty of time and room to process data, give you good pieces of information, so you can make good decisions. Our FAO meetings, we're also committing to deep dives. Staffing will be one example, and how we, you know, the calculations we use to put staffing into schools, and other places, as the budget evolves, we can be flexible, and if there are places where we want to look at deeper dives, that'll be the point of those, of those discussions, kind of at your direction. And then, on the bottom, for the community piece, so these, this is probably the line that's the least defined now, that as the TSCC date is defined, is in terms of how, how we want to structure those discussions, the kind of information we want to put together, and really make those meaningful and also focused. So with that, so we'll talk, you know, here, here, we are early March, you can see that we go to CBRC later this week, and we're going to talk about staffing with CBRC. Once again, kind of a good, small piece, it's a significant part of our budget, but we have some moving pieces in there, in terms of how we're making priority calls and resource decisions, so we want to give them plenty of time to really get as deep as they'd like to on that, and really understand the logic behind it. So with that, we're kind of in the analysis phase right now to understand revenue and spending, I'll turn it over to Jim, and he can walk through that piece of it.
So we have a next slide. So the first part of the budget process, as we said, is superintendent is asking everyone on the leadership, no, it's not the right one. They'll find it. Is, the first part of the process is superintendent is asking everyone on the leadership team, the chiefs on the team, to really rethink their contracts, rethink their people, rethink their strategies, from the standpoint of, are we getting results? And this is true on the instructional side and the business side of the organization. And so, one of the things that, on the central's office side that came up about that, is we have a lot of vacancies in the central office right now, and it didn't make much sense to be filling vacancies while we're rethinking what we're doing. So the logic was that until, until you really have an acceptable plan for how you're restructuring and knowing exactly what you want, that we're, that it doesn't make sense to fill vacancies, because you need to know what you want before you go out to get it. And so, I did an analysis of what that meant on the current service level side, and that's what I hope would be up on the screen there. And I must not...
It was so profound.
And, but I, do you have the paper copies there? Yeah, you have the paper copy, so we can just work off of that. I'm kind of old anyway, so this helps. This is very similar to the, to the analysis you saw before. The primary adjustment, although there are a few other adjustments in it, they're relatively minor, is that I removed the central office vacancies from the base expenditures, and it took about, about 12 or 13 million in costs out of the analysis. Now, that's not really realistic as a practical strategy, because I know it isn't in finance, I'll tell you that right now, but, but on the other hand, everything we do has to be justified, and so, and has to be added back, is the logic of this. And, but this shows you how important that thought process and determination has to be. I think the other thing that we have incorporated in these numbers, and we'll just constantly update them and eventually turn it over into a budget document, but, is that when we align the, the, what do we call that, the MTS or TMS, or whatever it is, the system that we use for doing the formula, with the way the budget works, we saved a little money in the process, when getting the FTEs aligned. So that's the other significant, that's the other relatively small change that's in these numbers. We are working on a lot of other things. We're doing, let's see, oh, I started on a Medicaid analysis, made some phone calls, got a lot of advice, need to sort of incorporate it into some sense of the revenue potential. We've done some work on the PERS rates, we've got a lot more, we've got some more work on the ending balance, a lot of that kind of analysis work, we're building into this, but we just don't have anything to change the numbers right now. I think that's kind of where we are.
Hopefully, what the directors are noticing is, you saw a prior version of this current service level analysis, you might want to circle or highlight the date at the bottom right corner, because what you see is a slightly edited version on the expenditure side, this is just our rough, continued conversations around some initial sort of deltas that we're building in, as each of the central offices develops their own budget, but Jim, CFO Schersinger, mentioned, you know, a few places where we already know that's going to be the case. We're not going to backfill the nonessential central office vacancies, for instance, and we're getting a bit more accurate in some of the numbers. So while you still see a gap between the resources and expenditures, you notice that the numbers, you know, already started to shrink, and that will true up now as our, as our chiefs and the central offices develop their budgets, well, ultimately, you'll get the details about how we, how we land a proposed budget.
And we've had some good conversation about how we can think through, how we can work through a process of improving contract management. That's become an important thing to get a handle on, as part of this process.
Can I ask a quick question about Medicaid?
Yes.
So, you know, we need to have disclaimers, this, I know this is very, very preliminary, so, but do you have any kind of ballpark sense of what, if we restart Medicaid billing, what it could yield?
So, so I called, I think his name is Eli, I think, you know, you know him, he sent me a whole bunch of stuff, and gave me some advice about where to go to find out more, and I just haven't had the time to work my way through it. But it's certainly on my, on my agenda. I've also talked to some other districts, and I guess I'm finding that, I mean, this is not a excuse or anything, but this is an issue all around the state, it's not just us. And they don't, they seem not to know as much as we don't know, or, I don't know if I'm saying that right. Yeah.
I think we are in acknowledgement that Medicaid reimbursement may be an important area where we can recoup some monies for services we're providing, so what we want to learn is, what's a process and a mechanism or a capacity we need centrally to be able to do that? It's hard to conjecture what that could be, but it would, I would be surprised if it weren't a few million dollars annually where we were able to do that. So hopefully, that helps our left-side revenues column a bit, but that's just one of a short list of ways that, you know, we've discussed with the team around, sort of looking at that as we look at other efficiencies across the school district. I think you heard earlier, we've already started to distribute an equitable staffing logic model to our principals, so they could get going with hiring. We don't think, none of our schools really should be experiencing a decrease in their overall site budgeting, so, you know, we, we've kept any sort of cuts, per se, away from our schools, so we have to find them here, emanating out of this building. It's no surprise here, there's a big line item here on non-personnel costs, it's upwards of $97 million. That's going to be an area we're going to be looking at very carefully, and it's add value to student outcomes and support to schools. So that includes contracted services and a myriad of other things, and so we just want to be good stewards of the public dollar.
I have a question, which I think is really of the superintendent, so, looking here at multi-tier systems of support, and trying to wrap my head around what that calculation actually represents, since it is something that we are actually doing, but something that we're also in the process of reimagining. So is this $2 million additive in that reconfiguration, or what does that really represent?
No, I think that's a good question, Director Konstam. As, you know, from our collective bargaining agreements, as you know, we agreed to make more robust our direct supports to students, more positive behavior interventions, more tier-two evidence-based practices, beefing up a rapid-response teams for kids who are in crisis. So this, this represents sort of a, this is just an earmark, kind of a list around probably a couple million in additional new resources, we agreed to three, but that's because we also have some pre-existing resources that we're dedicating that direction also. I would be surprised if we don't go way beyond the 3 million to actually get lift-off in this area, but it does represent, when you see multi-tiered systems of support, those kinds of student supports that our schools would have access to. That includes PD training, and it's also important to mention, because I know this was a pain point in the last budget development, that we had to, in some ways, go back and correct this fall, was making sure we have slightly padded special educator staffing allocations as well, so that we're counting students who are in process as well, and we're not trying to add or shuffle personnel after the start of the school year. So hopefully, our schools will see that that's just a little bit more generous than typically.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, so if no further questions on these two pieces, so, we're going to dig a little deeper on the staffing model now. And I think this represents a couple of changes for the district. One, it pulls the staffing in earlier, which does a lot of really good things for the district. It helps us hire good teachers earlier and come to market faster, so that's, that's good. It also helps us start to solidify, from a finance point of view, helps us start to solidify one big piece of spending, so we can start to work around that. So I'll call my partners up here to present this.
So I think our deputy superintendent's going to share some highlighted slides, I think. Some of our board committee already went through some of this, and we shared the details of it, as we continue to work with our site principals, but we wanted to make sure, for the public's benefit, we also highlighted some goals of our staffing model this year.
Great, and so, we're going to do this as a pair. So first, I want to share with you the highlights of the staffing methodology that we used. Does it go forward, or, who is moving the slides?
Ever.
Oh, I've got to click there, sorry. So here are some highlights of the refreshed school staffing model. Schools' equity allocation will now be tied directly to student outcomes. The second one is reducing the need for variance from agreed-upon staffing formula. The third one is allocating K8 by sections or classes, not school-wide ratios, which are hard to understand. The next one is K8 dual-language immersion, DLI sections are now counted separately to provide sufficient staffing, so it's not a detriment to the neighborhood school staffing. And then, equal K5 baseline for PE are library, and library at each school. So in terms of the student experience, sorry...
Is it okay if we have just questions throughout the presentation? Is that...
Yeah.
Go ahead, Director Sparza Brown. Last slide, last slide. If it's possible to go back.
Equity allocation tied to student outcomes, can you describe that a bit?
Yes, so, I think it's on a slide going forward, but I can explain it here. Before, when schools made decisions about equity allocations, each school would have made a different decision, and we might not have known why they chose to spend the allocation that way. So now, we're asking them to tie it to their cap plan by looking at their data and identifying where the need is, and then justifying how that staffing allocation is going to be used, what's the strategy that they believe will impact that outcome, and then how will we measure it.
Great.
Just to say a little bit more on the equity fund, if I, as I've kind of looked under the hood through this first budget development season here on board, is what I was observing, as I heard explanation... I was observing as I heard explanations, is that the equity fund was in some cases serving as an adequacy fund. And so the equity fund's intent, I think, is to make sure that those additional resources are going towards serving and supporting and resourcing strategies for kids that are not at grade level, who represent any type of outcomes gap at the school level, and so all we're asking, so hopefully what we've tried to remedy here is that schools are level-funded to be able to staff their classrooms, and that that equity fund truly is something that they will articulate in their school improvement plan, and be able to share with us how they're using that equity fund to push outcomes for kids.
And then we'll look at the outcomes, when we attract the outcomes, okay.
So I'm just going to ask, we're having a lot of acronyms tonight, if you can explain the CAP plan, and then Ryan, maybe when we go back to you, you can do CBRC and FAO. So we just, so that the broader community knows what we're talking about. So if you could maybe talk about, talk about the equity money funding being linked to the CAP plan?
So I did check on CAP, because it used to be Continuous Improvement Plan, now it's Comprehension, Comprehensive Assessment Plan.
You'll notice I just said School Improvement Plan.
It's all the same thing, the acronyms change on us too. And the DLI is the Dual Language Immersion Program. Thank you for stopping me, I try to know this one.
Very quickly, Deputy Superintendent Chris, will the board be able to see those CAP plans sometime soon, before the start of the next year? When will they be available?
You know, I haven't had a chance to even know what the cycle is, do you want?
Those are all readily available, is this in suit Lopez?
Yes, those are currently available, and you can view them on a website, so we can share what that we use, so you can, you can look at any school. Those CAP plans, they don't have a deadline, these are ongoing plans. Once you meet the goal, you might start another goal, right, but it has timelines in there, so we can give you access to those.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So there's some pretty profound changes in this school staffing allocation, that I think, it's not very many words, but some pretty big shifts, and I'm wondering if you take the fourth, no, third one down, allocate, allocating K8 by sections, classes versus the current way it's done by school-wide ratios, like, say what they, what that means for students, because it sounds very antiseptic, but it has a huge impact on students.
We will, we have some more slides giving more details for each of those, that was just kind of highlighting our goals, and then we have much more detail for you. And the very next slide is talking about, so what does that look like from the student experience? So before we revised the staffing allocation, most K5 students had two periods of PE per week, and some had three. Now, all K5 students will have three periods of PE per week. The second bullet, most K5 students have two periods of art per week, now all K5 students are insured at least two periods of art per week. So you can see what we're doing is just trying to ensure that, that each of these things that we are doing, that we see value in, are systemic, and that every student is getting access. The third one is that the equity dollars are allocated to support the schools in need, and that was what our superintendent just described, is it's not adequacy, but it's truly to get at our goals for equity, and to drive those improved outcomes for equity.
Quick question, so the three periods of PE a week, does that make us compliant with the state? No, it doesn't.
No.
But getting closer.
Yeah, getting closer. We still have two more years, but we're taking baby steps. So just to explain a little background, I always like to be clear about the why, so why would we even make changes to the staffing methodology? So some of the things we heard from different board members, community members, parents, sometimes principals, is that there was inconsistent course offerings in middle grades in high schools. So depending on where your student was, you might not even have all of the core for the same number of minutes. The lack of consistent rationale for school site staffing due to historical discretionary and various variations from the staffing formula, so there was a formula, and then there were different reasons why we had non-allocated FTE that was held back and then addressed those. So in this process, we were able, our great data people were able to look at the data and see where were those decisions being made anyway, and could we just provide it all up front and explain it all up front? And we still are finding there are areas that, you know, there's individual, building by building or program by program, where we still have to make adjustments, but this was our first run at it. Also, there was variation in the use of equity allocation, and we did not understand that there was connection to student outcomes, there probably was from the school's perspective, but when we just looked at the data, there wasn't a system-wide expectation that it had to be tied directly to that. So we're taking one step in that direction next year, and then we'll work with the senior directors and the principals to see how well that, that worked, and we might decide to get a little tighter in some of those parameters, but we decided for this first time, we wanted to take steps cautiously, because you're right, there are a lot of big changes with this. And then the changing state requirements, you've already mentioned PE, those requirements, the timeline was pushed back a little bit, it's not pushed back as long for elementary school, a little more for middle school, and that's not only because schools across the state don't have the resource to staff them, but it's also because a lot of schools do not have the space in their buildings to offer that many sections. In fact, we're hearing our principals are having to get pretty creative already with the three sections, so we know there are things we're still going to have to iron out as we go forward. So our goals, similar to what I started with, equitable, equity to support our equity objectives, to provide an academic baseline that was consistent with offerings at each of the schools, eliminating the need for as much non-formula, and I'll explain in another slide what that looks like. We wanted it to be explainable, so that board members, or if we're explaining to parents, they can understand why we allocated staff the way we did. Offers constrain flexibility, provides principals autonomy in defined areas, like with the equity money. So they still get some autonomy, because they need to look at their own school's data and need, but there's still some parameters around that. And then, to make it scalable, as we have enrollment changes over time, it's nice to just have formulas that can easily scale up or down, as we find out what those changes are in the programs, enrollment, or in budget. And then it provides stability over time, anytime you can make things clear and simple to explain, and people understand the rationale for it and how it helps students, it helps us stay with that and become resilient, making a stable organization over time. This next slide kind of just shows the buckets and the biggest changes in this new school site staffing allocation, too many S-words in a row for me. We had more money in, in a contingency before that we called non-formula, and now we've put more in the instructional bucket. So first we staff the instructional FTE, the school support, and Antonio will explain how all of that works. The equity allocation, and then we called it now Planned Contingency, so we had some buckets, there are places where we knew we needed to set aside, for example, with the moves with the middle schools, right? So there's some areas where we knew we weren't going to get it exactly right, and we'd set some money away to, or FTE away to solve those problems now, and then we have some still for the fall balancing. And so all of that together totals our current school staffing. So now the conversation by sections, and Antonio knows this so well and is so good at explaining it, I'm going to let him jump in now.
All right, thank you, Dr. Curtis, good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Directors, and Superintendent. So what I'm going to explain in terms of how these sections, how the sections work, right? In the past, we used to do staffing by ratio. What it means is we counted all the kids in the school, and then we divided, we picked the ratio to be twenty-five or twenty-six by classroom, we divided by that number, and that gave you the number of teachers, right? And it didn't matter if you were an immersion school, or a school with non-immersion, it was all put together. What we're doing now that is a lot more transparent and more equitable, is that we're doing by section. And we're doing it by grade, not the whole school. So we look at first grade, how many students we have, and then we have the class size range that you will see over there, that will determine the number of teachers that will get by grade level versus the whole school, right? The other thing that this does, that, that is really, principals are really happy, is that immersion is done separately, whereas in the past, it was all together, and so you have discrepancies in terms of how it was put together. So I'm going to go over in terms of explaining how the session works, and then I'm going to explain how PE in arts, it's separate, we're staffing separate, that way to keep the sections clean by teachers, and then I will give examples. So the next, the next slide is, this is what the specialist, right, PE, we're going to increase it from two periods to three periods, and the PE teacher is going to have nine sections per day, or forty-five sections per week, right, and then we will, we will allocate the FTE depending on the size of the school, and we will allocate the PE in increments of point two. And the PE schedule is going to be centrally defined, and for the specialist, the number has to be under thirty-five, like PE in art. Okay, next slide. This is for music and library. They're going to get two thirty-minute periods per week, and similar to PE, it's going to be calculated, and because they are taxed, then that will be the same as we've been doing in the last, last years. Library, it hasn't changed. We are locating a PERS point seven five, and we're requiring minimally that the school have a point five media specialist or library teacher, and the other point two five, which is halfway, that you can actually get another halftime position for a library assistant. But kids should get at least one thirty to forty-five, forty-five minutes per period each week. Okay, then let's go into the next one. So this is, this is how it looks like. If you look at, on the top, enrollment, we, this is a, this is a K5 school, you see how we separated immersion in Kinder, and I'm going to stay with Kinder, but it works for the other grades. In Kinder, you have twenty-five students, and if you look below section by grade in Kinder, that means that there is one teacher, right? And then if you look at the neighborhood program, you have fifty students, then that gives you two teachers. So in Kinder, you're going to have three teachers, right? And when you add all of them by the different grade levels, that will tell you the number of teachers that the school is going to have. Then on the bottom-left corner, you can see the eighteen homeroom teachers, and then we added the one point two PE instruction, remember that we counted the number of students, right, and then multiply it three times that they have PE, then that will give us the number of PE teachers that we're going to need. And then we do the same thing with art, that they get a, we use the same calculation. Does that make sense so far?
Yeah, so is that Planned Contingency that you're calling it now basically there for fluctuation in enrollment?
Yes, yes.
What does one point two PE instructors look like?
The way we're going to do it is, like in a school like this, they will have a full-time teacher in the school, and the other, we will work with that teacher, another teacher, PE teacher, to be there one day a week, and then we'll work with the other schools that have point two, so that way we can say this teacher is at this school on Monday, this teacher is at this school on Tuesday, the point two part.
Okay.
And it's allocated by one day.
Okay. And how would this compare with, say, last year for a school like this?
Because we are increasing PE, actually they're getting more, because before, before they used to get two times per week, now we're increasing to three times per week, so they should be, most schools should be getting more.
For, and I'm speaking also of the entire school?
Yes.
In terms of total FTE, how would, how would this compare with, you've got a sample school here, how would it compare with last year's formula?
I think when we look over all the schools, if you lose any students, then you're going to get a, I mean, you're going to get a less FTE, but we're still going to guarantee that you're going to get, you know, three times per week of PE in the library. So we have some schools, if they lost FTEs, mostly because of fewer students.
Okay, that wasn't quite my question. So taking this same school layout, if we used last year's formula, would this give the school same FTE, more FTE?
About the same, about the same.
Because this, this sample is showing you neat numbers.
Right.
But my understanding was that where you had maybe one strand of a neighborhood program and two strands of a dual language, and maybe your numbers dropped on the neighborhood side, so if you were allocated by ratio, you might get portions of a teacher for the neighborhood program, and now because we're funding by classroom, they get a full teacher. So because the ratios gives you portions of a person, portions of an FTE in elementary schools, that doesn't work. So by, by allocating by classrooms, am I making sense?
So I get, I get that conceptually, but actually showing numbers, I think, would be instructional.
Yeah, and then so we have, by school-by-school comparison, I can tell you, we have it in this, in this presentation, you'll see it, so system-wide, it's definitely more FTE, it's about fifty more FTE across the entire system, for all, and there come a couple other changes in the high schools as well, which we'll talk about, but system-wide, it's more, it's more FTE at schools.
But it finally helps to take the burden off those co-located, single-strand neighborhood sides.
It takes the burden off, and it also takes out that part where people are wondering, well, where'd you get the other FTE, and it was all in that non-formula, and now we're saying, we know you needed those whole teachers to fill those whole classrooms, so using the strategy keeps you from getting portions, that's why it costs more.
Okay, makes sense. I'm sorry, Director Konstam, and then Anthony, and then Director Bailey.
So my question is around, I'm sorry, is that what you said? So, now I forget what my question was.
I'm sure Director Anthony's ready to go.
No, so my question is around with the addition of the specialists, so with the PE teachers and the art teachers, what is our guidance around how the schools will absorb the loss to the instructional time in core subjects in K5 because of the additional time that those students will be spending in those specials? I assume that they're I assume that there is some consideration of that with a systemic guidance or not quite there yet? It's not a, okay. I think it's an important question, though.
I think that we will get a better sense once we get the schedules from the schools. How are they able to accommodate the PE and, and the instructional minutes per content area?
Because I think we wanna make sure that that response is consistent as well, right?
I think it's a, it's a, it's a very good question at all levels, elementary, middle, and high. We certainly wanna hold instructional time sacred. We wanna protect core instructional time, literacy, math, et cetera. And we wanna give our students, you know, a balance of access to specials and electives. So, you know, part of what we need to make sure we're providing guidance to our school communities and leaders about is, what does that protected time look like? Because, uh, you, you, you could sort of begin to supplant that, which we don't wanna do.
And the truth is, this has been the, part of the challenge in the, the whole conversation in the state with, with the mandate to add additional PE minutes. The only place it can come from is the total amount of minutes for instruction. So you, you can add more PE and also have the same number of minutes for reading, math, everything else. So the, the truth that we've all been living for a long time in the state is that we need longer instructional days to actually do best practice in every content area. Because otherwise, you have to do some kind of integration, which we should be able to do that around some things. For example, at elementary, we will be doing that with the health curriculum. It will be in with the, um, language arts curriculum.
Director Anthony?
Because the standards fit with a lot of the, uh, reading and writing is also, uh, technical reading and writing and nonfiction. So that's how you choose other, uh, try to integrate the other content areas. But those are the things you have to do when you don't have enough instructional minutes.
And I certainly support the call for more funding for more instructional minutes.
Good.
Deputy Superintendent Curtis, I wanna take you back, just one thought to what you said before about needing the whole person. And take you back one slide to libraries and, uh, what Director Lopez said. Uh, I am hearing that some of our principals are cutting back library, three-quarter librarian positions to the halftime that you suggested, Antonio, and filling with another person as a library assistant to make up that three-quarter time spot. And that for many of our librarians, that makes that no longer a viable job. It's not sustainable at, at point five when it was at point seven-five. And I hear we are losing some people because of that. And I, I wanna go back to something you said at the FAO meeting. It's really hard to get good librarians. Hiring on that's very difficult. I don't demand an answer from you now, but I want you to know that I'm hearing that that is really an issue.
And, and thank you for asking to the library, because what I forgot to mention is that high schools get a one-point-oh media specialist. In case the schools that have a greater than eighty percent historically underserved get a one-point-oh, one full position.
Director Bailey?
Um, going back a slide.
We're almost back to the cover slide.
Well, I did, you know, you guys were on a roll. I didn't wanna jump in. Uh, the, the class size ranges. So we're, the, the plan is to go up to as high as twenty-eight for a kindergarten. Um, and up to thirty and up to thirty-four as maximums before something else kicks in. Talk, talk about how that's gonna play out.
We are committed to, uh, working towards the class size goals that we agreed to in our collective bargaining process. So to use the example of kindergarten, uh, we set a goal of twenty-four students. Uh, but we know that there's gonna be variability from class to class, school to school. So for the purposes of staffing, we set these ranges. So I don't wanna confuse our public or our parents to think, uh, you know, these are the maximums now. Uh, we're still shooting for the twenty-four. We can't control for, you know, school age attendance in certain boundaries, but, uh, we're going for the twenty-four. And per, per our contract, we'll obviously, uh, take one of several options to, to account for any students over that amount. Uh, but for the purposes of staffing, you know, we went with a section-based model. Hopefully, it results in not less, at least level, but probably more staffing being allocated to our schools.
Okay. And for schools on the cusp, particularly, I talked to a parent today at one school that's, uh, has thirty kids in one of their grades. And that looks like one strand kinda continuing through. And, um, if there's any way to avoid that, um, I'd be sympathetic.
We, we wanna have the most ideal classroom size and programming we can make. Sometimes it's a, it's a facility constraint because there isn't another classroom. Sometimes there's a decision if, you know, we tip a certain number, we'll allocate the additional teacher. In some cases, it might make sense to deploy an educational assistant to, to sort of bring down that student-to-adult ratio. Um, or we have the, the option of supporting the teacher with additional compensation. But, um, I just don't want to cause, uh, anxiety that, you know, these are what the numbers are gonna start to look like. We, we know through this process, we're naturally gonna have some classrooms that go over the class size goals that we're gonna work towards over time.
So what, where are we now? Is, is the staffing set at this point? Or is there still some give and take going on? I, I know there's, uh, the, the staffing, there's sort of the initial plan. I don't know if it's the initial plan or the plan is, is out there.
So we've allocated the staff, staffing. Principals know what it is. They're now getting feedback to us and questions like, what about this? I have this little, I might have that class, and I'm trying to figure out how that fits with all of this. And then we meet daily to look at where those requests are and what we've held back, and can we do something to help adjust that? Knowing that it's not gonna be perfect. There will be places where we can't quite yet get to those goals. We're trying to minimize that. And so far, we have been able to respond to all of us. We know that more will continue to come.
Yeah. I'm particularly sensitive to the schools that were part of the middle school configuration and where we know there's been longstanding boundary issues that we have yet to get to.
And when I mentioned some buckets for the contingency, the one that has a pretty good size FTE in it was the one for the middle school conversions, because we know some of those, we don't exactly know where the kids will land.
Yeah.
So we're trying to help schools on both sides, but also try not to overallocate because then it's hard to pull it out. And then we may have needs that we can't fix in the, in the fall.
Thanks. I appreciate that.
So we have one more staff member to add to the presentation.
I was trying to answer your question, Director Bailey, while following it. So the, um, numbers that they presented around the instructional, um, FTE, instructional FTE is just one part of the staffing formula. And so, um, previously, yep, I did it right. Previously, we would have allocated by, you know, a ratio that, um, would have led to about sixteen-point-three FTE, um, from that bucket. But what happens is, that's not how schools operate, right? They don't put a point eight or a point six-four, um, third-grade teacher in front of a room full of third graders. They find the money through the other portions of the staffing formula, um, in order to make a whole person. So in the new model, as, um, Dr. Curtis, um, mentioned, um, more of what used to be set aside that might have been used to create this eventual outcome has now been put into the formula so that it's secure under instructional FTE. And the same thing on the equity side. So the end result might have been the same in how the schools actually operate, um, but it's just simply more clear and certainly more guaranteed, um, by putting it into the instructional FTE.
So this shows eighteen, and you said it by ratio, it would have been like sixteen?
Sixteen-point-three, I believe.
So you can see they got whole teachers.
Right.
And then is the equity formula would add on top of this?
In addition.
Right. So, and, and that gets back to, in previous years, the equity portion at times being used to plug holes instead of being.
Right. That's what our superintendent was calling adequacy.
Yeah. So I really appreciate the detailed questions of the directors, um, and, and trying to make meaning of. But I think what you're noticing are some key features of this year's methodology for allocating staffing to our schools. So, you know, we've tried to correct for what, what we heard in gathering feedback was problematic previously. So this, this issue of partial versus full teacher positions to staff as section is not a small thing. So in most cases, that resulted in, in schools experiencing an uptick in their staffing allocation, especially when they're hosting co-located programs. And so that was, that was a key thing we were trying to solve for. You heard the second one, not using the equity fund to make up for that foundational base funding, but to actually dedicate those funds to serve their, their achievement gap efforts.
From the six through eight.
All right. So the six through eight. Uh, we're basing this staffing on the sixth period for the middle grades. That means that students take six, teachers teach five, and one period is their prep period. And again, uh, uh, I'm gonna go over some of the examples. That's the class range, right? And this is the, the guarantee curriculum. This is what we guarantee that students will get. Right? And this is why, this is, um, another feature of this staffing is that there is a guarantee that students will get in terms of, um, um, their curriculum and access to, um, access to electives. Okay? Go to the next one. So this is how it looks like. Let's look at sixth grade again. Forty-three students. Sections by grade, if you look at six, that's two teachers. Then in the neighborhood, you had a hundred, you have a hundred and fifty-one, right? That gives you about five teachers, thirty students per teacher, right? So when you add all those, that gives you twenty-one teachers that this school is gonna, is gonna receive, right? Then you multiply that, those twenty-one by time, by six, because students gonna take six periods, right? That gives you a hundred and twenty-six sections. Does that make sense so far? You get the number of teachers, right? You multiply it by six because there are six periods during the day, right? That will give you a hundred and twenty-six sections. And then you div, you divide it by five because teachers teach five periods, right? That gives you that this school is gonna need twenty-five-point-five teachers.
Their almost inadvertent results of looking at it this way is that it is going to force us to have a more, a balanced student load for our teacher corps.
Right. And you can see on the class size, because we did it by, um, you can see sixth grade, the class size, uh, uh, will be twenty-one-point-five for the immersion. And for the neighborhood, thirty-point-two if you look at sixth grade. That gives you the class size.
And Dr. Parker's indicating that's one additional FTE compared to what it would've been last year on the old formula.
Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right. Uh, high schools. In high schools, we're still using the ratio plus enrollment. And with this one, it's ensuring equitable programming for all students. We're still bound by our, um, agreements with the union. We cannot go over the one-eighty, that is, teachers seeing over a hundred and eighty students. So we're asking, uh, principals to stay between the one-sixty and try to avoid the one-eighty as possible. Okay? Uh, we also applying equity, the same that we do for K-eight, which is the eight percent if you qualify for equity. And with this model, it is sufficient to meet the eighty percent of, uh, students taking a full load.
So just a question on that last item.
Yeah.
Um, so about four years ago, we had like seventeen percent of our high school students taking a full load. And, um, yep, seventeen percent. Uh, and I think the latest numbers have us to sixty-eight, which shows lots of progress. And that's of, um, the high school, um, counseling staff and administration, um, scheduling kids, freshman, especially freshmen and sophomores, um, into pretty much full schedules. I mean, the numbers look completely different than they used to look. And so, um, I'm wondering that we're, we're scheduling to eighty percent, which is more than we have now. What sorts of things, um, are we just putting that out there for the, the schools and they've gotta try and reach the numbers? Or we, um, is the district, the central office providing some sort of guidance on ways in which, um, we can have our students take a fuller day and perhaps get some of their CTE or, um, IB, AP, dual credit?
So we haven't had those conversations directly with the staffing, because really, honestly, just to keep on top of getting this out the door and understanding all the elements and making sure we're providing what they need has taken all of our time and energy. However, I know there's a lot of efforts going on with the Measure Ninety-eight money. There's been a whole group of people that have been, uh, we have, of course, a whole, uh, I think it's sixty, uh, CTE pathways. Uh, we have high school principals working with, uh, staff from OTL to design what we think is the high school success vision that would include more opportunities for CTE and then dual credits that would be dual credits for first and second, first year of college as well. So those effort, there's multiple efforts that we're working on and getting it into a, sort of a unified coherent process is, we're, we're still working on that. That will take us a little bit. Right now, I'm just gonna say, my view when I got here was that, um, because of how many things were done in the district, individual high schools were kinda making their own decisions in isolation of what other high schools might have been done because there wasn't a, a system-wide process. So we're taking the steps now to figure out how we would move to a system-wide process and wanting to do that in a way that's not disruptive to the students and to the teachers. And there's so many pieces to that. I just was in a conversation at IPC around even the grading by proficiency and how that is impacted even when it's different building by building. And ultimately, they all go together. So how we help our students see a bigger vision for themselves before graduation and what they could actually accomplish has got to be in one large vision. So we've got pieces that are working really hard. We just have to connect those. And that probably won't happen until we have our scope and sequence because we need to anchor it in our core instruction. So we, we're working on the edges to get things ready. So when we're ready to join it all together, we'll, we'll have the readiness there.
You can see our deputy's giving you a preview of coming attractions. But perhaps the best person to speak to, uh, guidance and expectations for our comprehensive high schools is our assistant, our senior director, Joel LaFontaine, here, stepping up to the plate.
Sure. Thank you. Um, actually, there's been a, this is a very multi-layered issue in regards to how we're moving from, uh, the sixty-eight percent you quoted to eighty percent. It's actually seventy-two percent when we actually did, so it's not as bad as you thought. But it is still quite a leap to make. And a big, there's several layers to it, particularly when you start talking about the, the notion of what is a full schedule. A full schedule for some students is only four periods a day because that's maybe all their IEP has in it. So there's a number of different things that we're trying to understand and resolve. With all of the relationships that we have in our community with different stakeholders, uh, both for, um, both for, uh, our colleges as well as some of the different apprenticeships that we have, we're trying to find ways to, to properly weigh what that equates to as high school credit inside their schedule. And so there's a lot of technicality that we're trying to do where we're trying to give balance and appropriate weight to things. An IB class. An IB class is definitely more challenging than a first-year class for students. We're also looking at drafting an administrative directive in regards to what our expectations are for the schools to do this, because the past practice has been too loose, and we are looking at tightening it up. The notion and the discussion has been at every comprehensive high school, and they all have plans for how they are trying to remedy it inside each of their own particular circumstances.
Thank you. I like that answer. Go ahead, Director Moore.
So I want to go back to the middle school, middle grades. So for the last decade-plus, the middle grades have been the most, where the inequities have been most visible and most egregious. So can you walk us through how this staffing system is gonna ensure that every middle-grade student, whether they're in a middle school or in a K8, is gonna get, you know, a full educational experience? Can you walk us through how that's gonna work?
So I guess first, I would have to know exactly what you think is full, because the challenge at middle school and probably why it's felt the most inequitable across the district would be because statewide, we haven't funded middle school high enough to have enough periods to offer all the core and then have sufficient electives. So our requirements this year with this level of staffing, every middle school student needs to have language arts, social studies, science, and math. And then they also need the PE and health for a quarter each. So that leaves about a year, I mean, one and a half periods, so one half semester for electives. It is a challenge if you are a student who is an ELL student that has ELD class, because that's your elective then, or a student on an IEP that goes to a separate class. So our staff in OTL and student services are working very diligently with middle schools now and will be to see how do we push in those services so we can ensure that all students will get access to, like, a STEM wheel or an elective wheel in some sorts. It is still a challenge with world language and music, where you tend to want to have kids have it every day, all year. Students will have to make a choice, and that's the tough part. So I think probably, Antonio can speak probably more directly to it, but it looks to me like schools made decisions based on what the school community thought was the highest value to them. And so in some cases, they created like a seven-period day or a modified schedule. They might have used some of their equity money to help in different ways. They might have had different numbers of minutes. Or in some cases, they may have decided some of the classes that we tend to call core weren't as important. Maybe they just gave them a semester versus a whole year. So we're kind of stating what's core and then requiring the PE and then saying with that little bit of time you have for electives, let's do some kind of wheel where we can so kids get a chance to explore different things. But with world language and music, and I can even just speak for my own children in another district, they had to choose.
So I think this is a really-
One chose music and one chose something else.
Important question. I'm gonna invite Senior Director Brenda Fox come up, because I think what Director Moore is bringing up is the, one of the key reasons why for the last couple of years, there's been so much conversation about ensuring an equitable middle grades experience. So what you're hearing tonight in our staffing is a move in the right direction. It's not perfect, it's not ideal, but what we wanted to find is what is going to be guaranteed in the way of offerings at grades six, seven, and eight, no matter what school you attend, whether that's a K8 or whether that's a comprehensive. Those models will never be equal per se, and we're not gonna begin to pretend that many of our school communities are able to enrich their offerings as well. And so there's variability and inequity there, and that'll be a next level of conversation for this board to think about in wrestling what kind of a policy or what kind of commitments do we want to ensure to continue to raise the foundation of what is offered in our middle grades programming. But I'd love for Brenda Fox to elaborate a little bit on what that sort of foundational core programming actually consists of.
So when we're looking at core programming, we're looking to make sure that there are minimum standards that we are addressing for all of our students. And what you're seeing is the tyranny of time taking over a little bit. We have a finite amount of minutes in the day to get in everything that needs to get in, plus those enriching opportunities. Like, so every student we're guaranteeing, as Dr. Curtis said, that they're gonna have the basics, language arts, math, social studies, and science. And then we're looking at meeting ORs and OARs for PE minutes. And as you may know, there's been a stall on the minutes, but it doesn't mean that we're not required to provide the content. And the OARs are very clear that we are required to address at every grade for every student the minimum standards for physical education and health, and we're coming into compliance with that right now. This year, we also have the collective bargaining agreement, and we're staffed on a six-period day, and the teachers have a maximum caseload of 150 students. So that's a place where it's sticking. Those of you who have heard me speak before, you've heard me talk about a flexible schedule, and that's what we need to consider moving to. And that means that within one day, a student's schedule might look different on day A than it does on day B, or one, or two, or blue, or green, whatever you want to call the days, but it would look different. And those are the things where we need to get. And part of that work also is if you remember the middle grades framework, is also looking at embedded opportunities for supports. So how do we embed ELD into our day? That's part of the work we're doing in the scope and sequence. Every scope and sequence for every content area has English language proficiencies embedded in it. So the work is beginning. We gotta walk before we can run, and this is a hard point that we're at right now, but we're at a really good point. We're really starting to walk what we talk and guarantee that every student has access to the core content curriculum as outlined by the state, and that is also what we know as best practice.
So I've had the opportunity to hear about the elective wheel and all that.
Right.
So I'm guessing most people listening to this have not yet.
Yeah.
So I think, you know, as we develop the budget work, I think we also need to be, you know, sort of publicizing what the middle school's framework is looking like at this point. Because it's changed substantially in the last four months. So I think, you know, it still gives me a little bit of hot burn to think that we're talking about minimum programming, but, you know, we are where we are. And an awful lot of work, and I, a great deal of it was done by you, so, you know, a lot of work has gone into this. I'm not sure that most people are really aware of where we are, so I wouldn't, you know, it would be good to hear more about that. But the other, two other things that I wanted to ask and maybe highlight. So is it fair to say at this point that the programming, let me put it a different way, students in low enrollment middle grades are still, are going to get this at least minimum level of programming regardless of the number of student bodies in the building?
Yes.
Okay, that's big.
It's huge.
That's huge.
I'd suggest instead of minimal, we say it's foundational.
Oh, I like that.
I like that asset-based language.
That's good, that's good, okay. They get me a little, still a little hot-berny, but it's less. Okay, so the other thing, though, is that I think what we've learned, one of the things we've learned, is that there is an art to scheduling.
Yes, there is.
And I'm, my understanding is that we have not, as a district, provided a lot of training or support to principals and around scheduling. So it's, this is a job I would not want to do, because my head would explode. And have we set up some kind of support system for principals, especially new principals? I mean, we're gonna have all, there are gonna be a lot of changes happening. Are we, are we working on that? Because if you, you may have the right number of FTE, but if you're not sure how to use them and how to schedule them, it's not gonna be optimal.
You're absolutely correct. And one of the arts to scheduling is being able to see three or four things, what this one decision will mean in three to four steps from where you are.
It's three-dimensional chess.
It's really, it's really large. And I was fortunate enough at a time when we had a consultant come in and teach scheduling, so I was fortunate enough to experience that. Right now, we work to get a scheduling person to come in and consult with us, and he wasn't able to make it with us this year, so we're hoping we'll get him for next year. But we are going out to schools when they ask for help, so I'm going out to a school on Thursday morning to help with their scheduling, and I know other people are doing so as well. And then Dr. Curtis, maybe you can speak to that more.
Well, I think you answered it. And that is, right now, if people are asking for help, we're giving help. We have been focusing on the newly opening schools and making sure we're providing help there. Senior directors are in touch with their principals, and if they need that help and support, there are a few people in our office who can help with that. I know Sean, who helped with the staffing, and who else was doing it, too?
Daniel Kogan.
Yeah, Daniel was helping as well, so.
We've had a rich discussion. I'm gonna have Director Anthony ask his question, and then I'm gonna see if Student Rep Tran or Director Rosen wants to ask a question, then we'll be, complete this section. Go ahead, Doc.
A couple of comments. And Ms. Fox, if there is anything that I can do to help support you in advocating for a more flexible schedule around the middle school day, I hope you'll let me know.
Okay.
You and I have talked about that many times in the past, and I certainly see the need. I'd like you to go for a change ahead to slide 14. And I want to pile on on the subject of scheduling. I assume that this new school support FTE allocation is liable to result in some cuts for some schools. And Dr. Curtis, Mr. Lopez, as we're looking at that, I hope that you are having the senior directors stay in contact with the principals and see what people and what skills you might be losing, because if you take away the one person in the building who actually knows how to schedule, we're gonna leave a smoking crater. And I, Antonio, I know you know that, but I really want to make the point. We have, we've created a system where we have many people with their fingers in the dyke and holding back scheduling, holding back student discipline, holding back all kinds of things. As we're retrenching, I hope we're being very thoughtful about what we might be losing at any one school.
Student Rep Tran? Did you have other slides you wanted to present?
It's up to you. This is-
So here's what I'm gonna say, I think we're going to be done with the questions. So go ahead and present through if you can do it efficiently, and I'll ask the board members to just, we've been through, we've been through this once before, so I know this is, this gave us a great opportunity to do a deep dive, and very much appreciate the staff, but let's maybe just move to this.
The great thing is, there's gonna be many more opportunities to dive into the details.
Yes.
I think we can go through just a couple of slides that I think are most relevant. I think this one's self-explanatory, but again, consistent with the theme of a transparent logic model for how these support staff get allocated, assistant principals, secretaries, counselors, try to make those ratios as ideal as possible. Of course, they can always be better as we get more efficient, as we get a little leaner, maybe we can turn up the dials on improving those ratios, but for now, this is the way that we can kind of make it work across all of our schools. Next slide. Let's keep going. Let's talk for just a second here. We've already been alluding to this, but how the equity allocation actually gets determined, what that criteria is, if Mr. Lopez, you could talk about that.
Yes, these are the schools, 19 of the 31K5 schools and 20 of the 26K8, this is how they qualify for the equity. It's 8% based on the free and reduced and historically underserved. And like it was said before, now with the section that is cleaner and more transparent, then we want to be more intentional in how that equity is allocated specifically to address those students that need additional support and to be very specific in terms of how it's documented in the comprehensive assessment plan.
That's a really important difference, because for a long time, historically underserved students in schools with a smaller population of historically underserved students have really been neglected.
Yes. This will, like, if a school is struggling with blackmails, the equity can be specifically utilized, so how, what are the supports of the extra services that this population will get.
Regardless of how many of them there are.
Regardless of how, yes. So that's, this can be more intentional.
And then, could I ask maybe our chief of HR to speak to this last slide? It's just a few variables to keep in mind. You know, this is never a perfect science, these projections for staffing, but we do want to be clear around what are some of the areas we're taking into account.
Good evening again. So thank you. The, as you heard earlier, instead of the non-formula allocations, we have planned contingency now, and we're really thoughtful in where those buckets of FTE for our contingencies went. You heard Dr. Curtis talk about a significant amount for school transitions, so our middle and feeder schools. Targeted intervention, after OD defines targeted schools, we expect that, I believe, in August. We are holding some to be able to allocate resources to those schools. And then the last two, I think, are important, because we always have planned for fall balancing, planned for what we don't know yet about enrollment and the unexpected students that we have in one building and unexpected less students in another building. But one of the things we're trying to use, some data that we already have available to us, is to do some planning for vacancies that we know occur every fall. And so what you will see shortly when we begin posting internally our open positions is some vacancies that are posted specifically around positions that we know open up every fall and that we don't currently have plans for or know about. So special education is one of those areas, certainly some of our higher need academic areas. And so that is where the planned contingency are allocated for this upcoming year.
Thank you. If I could ask our budget director to close us out with this last slide. So what is this package gonna cost us? And what does that look like overall when you tally up all these refreshed changes, priority around staffing by section, keep preserving a true equity fund, making sure we're ensuring foundational middle grades offerings? All of that sort of comes to a grand number here, and maybe he can refer you back to how that appears on our analysis that we started this presentation. that we started this presentation with.
That's correct. Yes, thank you. Yes, that's a really good point. And I think, you know, from a, from a finance point of view, and this is why I still have confidence in the budgeting process, is it, it helps us if we say we're going to improve outcomes and improve, improve equity and give our students more offerings, we need to make sure that we're actually investing right alongside that. So you see here, pretty simply, I'll take you to the very bottom row. You see here about fourteen and a half million dollars of additional spending versus last year's staffing model. And the fiscal year seventeen, eighteen, that's actually what's happening today. That's not a budget number. That's actually what, what's happening today. So you see a pretty significant increase. I'll just highlight a couple of different pieces. If you look at the very top row, you can see the number of FTE increase that we talked about before across the entire system. It's about fifty. If you, you see the base salary piece. So now we're starting to also get, you know, the PAT increases are in here as well. So that's starting to drive that number up also. And then you, the estimated overage wages. So that's the piece that we reference when we have a class size over a certain amount. That's our, it's a round number. It's our estimate on how much that might cost us this year. So if I were to kind of parse this apart, the actual staffing increase, the fifty FTE, that's about five point five million dollars. The rest of that comes in, you know, higher fringe expenses and more health and, health and wellness expenses, et cetera. But, you know, five point five million is the price tag to put on this, you know, on this approved staffing model.
That concludes our update this evening.
Excellent. So the, just the two hundred and seventy-three, that's like a third of the budget or close to half of the general fund? So if the allocations have gone out to the school, just so we're all clear, about half of the budget is in, in motion already.
And that's the typical first stage here is to get out to our school communities to make sure they're aligning with priorities to date. We heard clearly, you know, middle grades. And hopefully what schools are experiencing is, is a little bit of a dial turn up here. But a lot of the cost is, in fact, on, on those natural salary increases that are going up here. But it is, it is not a small point that, you know, some of it is out the door here now for our school communities to begin doing their community planning around school year eighteen, nineteen.
That's great because it means that, that budget calendar, which we're really sort of at the front stage of, where really a big piece of it has, is on its way.
And then I'll say, I'll say one more piece of that. In terms of kind of macro budgeting, we really, we have, you know, generally speaking, we have two moving pieces at this point. We really have the central office staff and we have the contingency, the reserve. So those are the two pieces. You know, we're spending a lot of time trying to quantify and do the math on the central office staff. And we'll also have discussions about reserve as well.
Excellent presentation, good discussion, board members.
Big thank you to all the staff working.
Thanks for putting up with all our questions.
All right. Next on the agenda, the board, we're going to have a consideration of a Step Three complaint. The board received a packet of information on the matter, which we cannot discuss openly at this time due to legal confidentiality. But will now be voting on whether or not to hear the Step Three complaint. So board members, I would like a motion to hear the appeal, to hear the appeal in this matter.
So moved.
It's been moved by Director Anthony and seconded by Director Sparza Brown. And I requested that motion because there are discussions underway and we hope there'll be a path to resolution. Individual votes to hear the appeal may or may not indicate how a board member will vote on the final appeal. So board members, all in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? The motion passes on a seven to zero vote. Thank you all. So next, we're going to go into committee referrals. I'd like to ask Director Sparza Brown, who, the Chair of the Teaching and Learning Committee, at a, I think it was two board meetings ago, we referred two resolutions to your committee. And we had a meeting on it and like you to share that. And anything else from your committee you want to share?
Well, there, there's been two Teaching and Learning Committees since then.
Okay.
So this is just a committee report.
We're doing referrals. Just want to make sure we don't miss the reports for going referrals.
Oh, no, I'm doing a committee, this was actually, it's a committee report that was a result of a referral. Oh, okay. No, then good, good catch. It was a. Okay, so on February twenty-eighth, Teaching and Learning met to receive updates on two resolutions that were proposed last June, I believe. The first was Resolution Fifty-four eighty, Resolution to Create a Comprehensive Professional Development Plan, that stated, "The superintendent is directed to bring to the board a comprehensive plan for how decisions are made concerning professional development time use by school staff. This plan should include a yearly schedule for each building." So we heard a report that highlighted the PD plan for this academic year, which is, the PD was two half-days prior to the school year, thirty-six two-hour staff meetings on Tuesdays, and seven two-hour late openings, four two-hour early releases, and so forth. And then we also discussed that the plan will look different for next year and that that will be, it's in development currently and that will be completed by the end of June for next year's PD plan. So the second resolution is Fifty-four eighty-one. And that reads, "The superintendent is directed to bring to the board a comprehensive ESL education plan for students above the primary grades, which includes an analysis of intensive English language instruction for ESL students whose primary language is one other than English or Spanish and are at the lowest ALPA levels." So we received a report from the EL Department. And to give you a little background on this, the request was to look at the potential of an intense language study program for our newly enrolled emergent bilingual students, based on the program that's used by the Mormons in the kind of a language boot camp. So staff presented what, after looking at all the information, then presented the PPS program model, our current model and a proposed model. That includes teaching really both English language development and academic content acquisition. So the staff also reviewed that they have, have undertaken an outside evaluation of the program. The data is currently being analyzed and we'll get more reports on kind of the next steps of that. So those were the two resolutions. Then we met.
Director Sparza Brown?
Yeah.
Can I just make a request that, thank you for the report and that for those individuals on the board who aren't members of the committee that just, to ask staff to distribute the two items to the rest of the board members so that they have them.
The reports.
The reports, yes.
Okay, I'll send those on. Thank you. We met this Monday and heard, we really looked at the issue of alternative programming. We had a great presentations, presentation about avid programs. We have a school of distinction, an avid school of distinction, which is Marshall High School. Madison High School, God, I'm sorry. Marshall, Madison High School. They share the professional development that occurs in the summer. There's also a professional development opportunity this week and board members are invited. And can we make sure to get that date out to all board members? We had also a presentation on reconnection services, which is to really go door to door to find those students that have dropped out of schools and basically give them a personal invitation back into the system. We find that there's disproportionate representation of students of color and twenty-six percent with IEP. So that certainly has us take a, reflect back on our core programming and how we're doing as a system in meeting the needs of those students when, when we have that disproportionality. And let's see, there is great opportunities now with the Measure ninety-eight money and being able to provide that hands-on learning that students often who are dropped out of school at some point need in order to be re-engaged. We talked about the Discovery Program, which is a program that has essentially two FTE, teacher, two FTE associated with it. And what this one was, is, takes place at Alliance High School. And it is a program modeled after a school in Colorado that's kind of a, almost like a newcomer program into Alliance High School, where it's a six-month program that students are clustered. So the six, six-week program, okay? That, but they're with a cohort to bond and to really look at their social emotional needs and to prepare them to be students. Because some of these have also, I mean, they've been unsuccessful at other places. So it's giving them kind of a soft landing to help them learn the skills to be successful students. And last, which is congratulations to the staff that we have been awarded a prep grant. It's a grant through the Department of Education that is four million dollars, which is a significant grant over five years, focusing on three things, project-based learning, increased access to CTE and social emotional learning, and gives us the resources to hire mental health workers, social workers specifically, with a cadre of interns there. Education Northwest will be the evaluators there. So it's really exciting to learn of all of those opportunities for our stuff, for kind of our understuders, students. So that's my report. And thank you.
The avid professional development that we're invited to sit in for at least part of the time, this, tomorrow and Thursday from eight-thirty to three-thirty at Rice, and also April third and fourth, same time, same place.
And the topic was, I believe it was culturally responsive, isn't it?
Yes, I think it's.
I think it was around culturally responsive instruction.
Yeah, that's right.
Thanks, Director Bailey. Tonight in our business agenda, we have a number of charters. No, I'm, we're still in the committee reports, sorry. You know what? Do you have a report tonight? Okay, how about if we? Let's go with Director Anthony, if you don't mind. We'd like to have a student rep report first.
My student rep report is just that Supersac is finalizing and are securing a date for our conference. So that's really exciting to me. We're looking at the last week or late April. And we're in the process of electing a new student representative. So we're looking at potential candidates, suggesting who's interested and things like that. And then just in light of earlier, I think Supersac will take a look at student testimony just because, from my previous knowledge and from earlier in my term, I believe that we always held a separate section for students, for student testimony. And so that's just something that I feel strongly about because we don't really get to hear students come here. So I think that we should leave the opportunity open for students. So hopefully, that, hopefully Supersac can come to the board with a proposal about that. Which brings me on another topic, kind of, is that not necessarily a cry for help, but I really think that we need to prioritize on making a process of what, where, when issues end up in Supersac, how are they brought to the board? Or how are they brought to different staff members? And maybe that means having a meeting with board, PPS staff, superintendent in Supersac on how we develop that process. I remember last year talking to Alima. She talked about during the budget session, a lot of students would come and issues would be referred to Supersac. But she wasn't sure about what's the process of how do they get out of Supersac to see the board or see staff? So, you know, let's talk about like how much Supersac has done the past two years during Katie's term or during Alima's term. How many proposals have we brought on policies? And see, like, why we aren't bringing policies or why aren't we really affecting change? And see if like Supersac is really set up to succeed or is it set up to fail? Because by the end of my, my term, I, you know, in spite of everything else, I want to make sure that the next student representative is set up to succeed next year and that they don't have to spend all this time navigating the school district, navigating central office, and that they can get into affecting change and affecting policy in our school district.
Thank you. We'll try and schedule something as we, over the next month and a half, to have that discussion. So in tonight's business agenda, we have a number of charter school contract extensions. And I know Director Anthony's committee has been working hard. Would you like to speak to what we've got before us?
Thank you. I have just a couple of quick comments. I know I speak for the whole committee and I hope I speak for the whole board when I say thank you to Tara O'Neil and Corinna Wolf. They have not only worked very, very hard supervising our charters, but they've obviously been very effective and have done a really tremendous job. And thank you very much. It's, it's been a real pleasure to work on these. I also want to mention, because I know it's been in the press and is really on people's minds, staff is continuing to work with the staff at Trillium Charter School. And while they are not up for renewal, the district is taking their situation very seriously. One charter we are not considering this evening is LeMond French immersion. And that is because Chair Bram Edwards has very rightly been very persistent about raising issues of a lack of diversity in all of our charters. And it's not to pick on LeMond specifically, but since theirs is a five-year renewal and the others are only one year, we wanted to look into the issue a little more thoroughly on our own. Unfortunately, between the legislature and the Oregon Department of Education, they are not giving us a reasonable lever to use to deal with diversity. And unless you have a pretty powerful tool to use, as we find from our own programs that involve choice, choice almost inevitably leads to segregation. We have been in touch with the Oregon School Boards Association. We are looking at every tool that we can. We will be bringing LeMond to the board for approval at the end of the month. And the last thing I would touch on very briefly, I know that this is an issue for many of our schools, but we have the data very clearly for our charters. There is a real lack of adequate immunization for children in Portland and our charters in particular. Rates are ranging from sixty to eighty percent. And in order to get herd immunity for those children who cannot be immunized, you need at least ninety-five percent. I want to mention the issue so that parents are a little more aware. Please, please, consider immunizing your children. And with that, I, the committee is unanimous in recommending that the board approve these extensions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Director Anthony. Those will be a part of the business agenda tonight. Let's see, Director Constam, Rosen or Bailey, did you have, did your committee meet or have a report? Or something you'd like to? Go ahead.
Follow-up question. Charters run their own lotteries to determine?
Yes, they do.
Is there any transparency around those lotteries? Or how's, how's that work?
The charters we have seen, yes, they are transparent in how they do their lotteries. I don't mean to be elliptical or obscure. The legislature gave charter schools the opportunity to have a wait. The Department of Education has offered no guidance on that, other than to say to each charter, "You should individually engage an attorney, write your own process," and implied in that is, "And good luck with the lawsuit." Because it is, to my mind, a grossly irresponsible thing to do to our charter schools.
It's interesting, though, when we queried about if any schools do have, charter schools do have weighted lotteries, they pointed to one in Portland, which is Kairos, that uses a weighted lottery and has a fairly diverse student body.
Weighted by race or by income?
Yes, among other things.
But they do include race?
Well, historically.
I think, I don't have it in front of me, I think it's, there's a geography, so I don't want to guess. We have a copy of it, and let me show it to you.
We have a copy of it. Yeah, let me not. We have somebody who can answer.
Can you hear? Can I just?
I want you to speak into that, because that way, yes.
So the, the weighted lottery that Kairos is using includes all eight categories on the application, and parents self-identify the student. To be considered historically underserved, the student needs to qualify by at least two of the eight categories that ODE has entered. And so it's done self-identification by the parents, and any student that has two or more of those boxes checked gets a second weight in the lottery.
Thank you.
Eight categories.
As long as you're there, yeah. Can you, do you have them in front of you, the eight categories? If not, that's okay.
I can kind of name them. I don't have them right in front of me. Race, ethnicity, address, gender, socioeconomic status. I think I have the, yeah, race, ethnicity, English language proficiency, socioeconomic status, gender, sexual orientation, disability, geographic location.
Great. Thank you. So thank you for the report, Director Anthony. You didn't have a report, committee report, your committee hasn't met?
Correct.
Okay. Director Rosen, has your committee met?
It's meeting next week, next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday, what time?
At eight AM, I think.
So that's.
Eight AM.
That makes a difference.
I know. I'm trying to find out.
You're like those high school students. Me too. That's the Health, Safety and Accessibility Committee.
Okay, nine? No, no, nine o'clock is fine.
Let's just say it's nine.
Let's say nine. It's nine on my calendar.
Okay, so nine o'clock for the Health, Safety and Accessibility Committee, next Wednesday. Thank you. Director Konstam, your committee?
We are meeting next week, next Monday, at four for the Legislative Committee, where we'll go through the wrap-up from the close of the special session, among other things.
Great. So the Committee on Policy and Governance met this last week. The primary source, the primary focus of this discussion was sort of further developing complaints policy, it's a revisions of the policy. I think we have another meeting this week, and hopefully we'll have it first read at the March twentieth board meeting. Anything else to report from the committees? Nope?
FAO meets next Tuesday, three to five.
So we're going to go into the business agenda. The board will now consider the remainder of the business agenda, having already voted on Resolutions Five-six-oh-six through Five-six-oh-seven. Board members, are there any? Director Anthony?
Yes, I've got a couple of questions on the contract for Education Northwest. Ms. Wolf, if you're still here?
Liz, do we need to pull it out of the agenda to have a, ask questions about it, or?
I don't think it needs to be pulled out to ask questions, just to be voted on separately.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm sorry, somebody was, I was, I missed your question.
No, that's perfectly fine. I'm in a fog most of the time, so. You already provided a great deal of information on this contract, I appreciate it very much. I have only two other questions. Why was it done as a personal service contract, and why was it no bid?
So the reason that it would have been a no-bid contract is that we wrote, they wrote the grant with us, and I can look around and see if there's someone from our, from our contracting, but I can answer, I can confidently answer that. So when we wrote the grant in April, we approached Ed Northwest as, and they wrote in part with us, and, and just with regard to the depth of evaluation and what we were asking for, they were, they are the, they were the resource in town that is capable of providing that. And so they are also mentioned in the grant, in our receipt of the grant, as the evaluator.
Oh, yes, okay, good, thank you. That does raise the question, how much is the grant for?
The grant, so I want to be really clear, it's, it's almost four million dollars, but it's three point nine and, and some more. So it's not exact, it's not, our full proposal was four million dollars, and we are a couple hundred thousand shy from that. So it's just under four million dollars.
Very good, thank you.
You bet.
And I just want to offer to Director Anthony, because I know a couple of themes in that grant are areas that I know you're very interested in, Director Anthony, so if you're interested in a briefing, more details, we'd be happy to do that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. And part of the evaluation talks about social emotional as well, outcomes as well as our academic outcomes, so we're excited for the work.
So Ms. Hewson, were there any other changes to the business agenda? Do I have a motion and a second to adopt the business agenda?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Anthony and seconded by Director Konstam, that we adopt the business agenda, all those in, is there any discussion, sorry? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Student rep?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes by a seven to zero vote with the student representative voting aye. So our next regular meeting of the board will be held March twentieth. I want to thank all the staff.